Good evening. Welcome to the Wilmer City Council for Monday, February 5th, 2007. Roll call.
Mayor Heitke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Dokken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Deble.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thank you, Kevin. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening to our citizens and staff and media who are present in the chambers and to the citizens who are watching this meeting on the local access television station. Tonight, we have one scheduled public hearing and we also have a number of minutes of various meetings. We'll begin with the Item 4, which is any proposed additions, deletions, deletions or changes to the agenda. I want to inform the council that we do have some members of the community to be considered for appointments to city committees, and I'd like to put these under the consent agenda. These include Mr. Dave Baker for the Municipal Utilities Commission. He lives here in Wilmer for the past 14 years. He's involved in the hospitality business, past president of the Chamber of Commerce and past president of the CVB. Actually, he was voted the Citizen of the Year in Spicer because of his business involvement up there with Melvins on the Lake. For the Library Board, we have Ken Oll. Ken is involved in Heritage Insurance Company, Pioneer Heritage Insurance Company. He's lived in Wilmer for 35 years. He and his wife Cindy have one daughter and they're members of the Methodist Church. He's on the Board of Directors for the Minnesota Independent Agents Associates. It's an insurance association for the state. For the Planning Commission, we have Renee Ron. Renee is the owner of Becker and Fifth Street Marketing. Renee has quite a history of being involved in marketing over the years. She was co-chair of the Wilmer Design Center Marketing Committee, coordinator of Main Street Wilmer for three years. She and her family are members of the Redeemer Lutheran Church. And for the Planning Commission, we have Wayne Stoneberg. Wayne is a longtime employee at Marcus Construction, has lived in Wilmer for 35 years. He and his family are members of Vingy Lutheran Church. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, Eileen Huberty. Eileen is a retired teacher. She graduated from St. Catherine's College in St. Paul. She's lived in her same home for the past 46 years. She's been involved in girl scout leadership, teaching adolescents for many, many years. She's a member of the Association of Retarded Citizens, or ARC, and she wanted to assure me that she definitely knows and understands how to read blueprints. So apparently, she studied that and worked with that in college, so she's quite familiar with blueprints. So those are the committees' appointments I'd like the council to consider. We have one other one, but we're going to hold on that one because we need to check on the street address and make sure the person lives inside the city limits. So those will be considered first. So at this time, we'll move then to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Tonight, that includes the city council minutes from January 22nd, the Utilities Commission minutes of January 22nd, the Planning Commission of January 24th, the building inspection report for the month of January, and these five appointments to various city committees. Any discussion or anything any council member wishes to pull from that agenda? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. We will now go to our scheduled public hearing, which has to do with a new ordinance that establishes fees charged by the city of Wilmer. And I'd like to call on our city attorney, Mr. Richard Rawning, to introduce this ordinance. Rich?
Mr. Mayor and council, the ordinance is simply putting into ordinance form what the council had previously done at their first meeting in January in resolution form. With respect to the three sections that are shown in the ordinance, there were other things in the resolution that you adopted at the first meeting in January that are not included in the ordinance because they don't need to be in the ordinance. But the items that are shown in Sections 1, 2, and 3 should be by ordinance. The increases shown in Section 1, the underlined amounts were previously adopted in that resolution, but as indicated, we're now putting it into ordinance form.
All right, thank you, Rich. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to ask any questions or make any comments about this proposed ordinance? Would you come over to the microphone, please, and introduce yourself?
My name is Chad Compton, and I'm here representing the West Central Builders Association of...
Good evening, Chad. What's on your mind?
Well, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council for letting me address you tonight. I'd like to tell you that the Building Inspection Department in Wilmer is top-notch. The problem is the fees. Taking from city finance reports, in 2003, the total revenue taken in by the Building Inspection Department was little over $584,000. There's some tapping fees in there. We took those out of $74,000. So the total revenue minus tapping fees was $509,000, with a total expense of $328,924. The difference being $180,000. The percentage over revenue on that is 55%. In 2004, there was revenue minus tapping fees, I'll get rid of the tapping fees to make this quick, was $413,000, with an expense of $348,477, a difference of $65,164. 18.7% over expense. In 2005, there was $539,584, less the tapping fees of $11,600, with a revenue minus tapping fees of $527,985, and an expense of $377,108, difference being $150,876. 40% over revenue. Or the expense, the revenue less the expense was 40%. In 2006, there was $496,094, less the tapping fee, for a total revenue of $445,724. The expense showed $383,586, which would make a difference of $62,137, with a percent of 16.2%. So the totals for the four years that we looked at was just a little over $2 million as far as revenue, less the tapping fees, 1.9 rough, with an expense of 1.4, difference of $460,000, give or take a few dollars. Total percent difference was 31%, or 31%. The expenses we used include five full-time employees, supplies, copying, and all that kind of stuff. And the revenue in this, in these numbers does not include any of the projects that were forgiven by the city. I think one of them was the hospital, and there was typically, there's two to three of them a year. As far as the West Central Builders Association, we have a few recommendations as far as where this would go. One of them would be lowering building permit fees, a minimum of 30% for the next four years, and reviewing that every single year. Number two would be having no permit fees for one year. And number three would be sending the fee schedule itself to a committee consisting of city staff, council members, members of the West Central Builders Association, and anybody that is interested. And that's all I have.
All right.
Unless somebody has a question.
Sure, why don't you just hold for a second? Any council members have any questions or comments here? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chad, the expense fees that you're talking about, what is the source of those figures?
The source of the figures is right from the city's accounting software, as far as, there's a lot of line items on there.
Okay, because I know that the city has to file a report every year with the state regarding expenses that are accounted. Is that, would that be the document that you're talking about?
No.
If I may interject, they're from the expenditure budget worksheet and the revenue budget worksheet, right from my finance office.
Maybe I can ask of staff, then, are those figures substantially different than what is filed with the state each year?
I cannot speak to past years because I don't recall those figures right off the top of my head, but we do use, obviously, the numbers from our accounting department in filing those reports. What's missing in this whole process is the understanding that permitting and inspections is a function that requires cost accounting, and there's participation from numerous individuals and departments that are not reflected in the costs that were outlined previously. So those costs, we do make an attempt to do a full cost accounting for our report to the state.
So if I can follow up, then, is there, is there a concern that we're, excuse me, is there a concern that we're not fully accounting for all the costs within the, that we incur as a city right now? Because I noticed this keeps going up and up on the expense side, and even though the, even though the fee revenues seem to be fluctuating.
Well, the reason it keeps going up on the expense side is because what was reported were probably just departmental budget numbers. And like I said, there's a variety of participation levels from different individuals and departments that occur annually. So each year, we'll communicate with the other departments in the course of the year and say, "Give me a," and this is as accurate as it can be, short of counting hours, "what percentage of your departmental budget do you think is attributed to the building inspection process, plan review, inspections, communications, whatever?" And that's what we use as a basis to do the most accurate cost accounting we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? I have a couple of questions, Chad, and I don't know if you can answer these or not. When you said that the expenses are related to five full-time employees, who are those five employees that you're thinking of?
Bruce Peterson, Randy Cardell, Tom, the other building inspector, Secretary, and then Maggie.
Megan Sauer?
Yeah.
Assistant?
Planning.
Planning and development person?
Which, I don't think really all of them are in that department 100%. The secretary probably isn't 100%. I know Bruce isn't 100%. So in taking other aspects into it, like the fire marshal and other departments, it would also have to be taken out that these five employees probably are not truly 100% dedicated to this, this particular area.
All right. Any other comment? Councilmember Fagerly?
Thanks for coming, Chad. How do we differ from the county, or Litchfield, or Hutchinson?
Well, as far as fees, they're all pretty much the same.
Okay. So what they're doing is, you think, isn't right also?
Well, in essence, yes.
Okay.
You know, Minnesota statute clearly states that a municipality must adopt management and accounting procedures to ensure that fees are maintained and used only for the purpose for which they are collected. And they must be fair, reasonable, and appropriate. So to just take a percentage of how much time somebody's putting into the department that wouldn't necessarily be listed technically as a participant in that necessarily may not be correct either. You know, it's clearly states that there has to be, you have to take into account more than that. You know, it should really probably go by the hours. How many hours do they spend? Not just 25% of their time is taken, or 10%.
So what you're thinking, there should be a rebate?
As far as?
Some people that built in the last year?
I think that would be a little difficult to do.
Okay. What about in the future, if you didn't have any building fees for 2007 then? Because it's a user fee, isn't it? So whoever wanted to build this year and wouldn't pay a fee, that wouldn't be right either, would it?
No, that wouldn't necessarily be. So, you know, it says that the statute says that the funds cannot be used for any other thing than the Building Inspection Department. So one of the reasons why we came up with 30% is that's about what we came up with as an average. So that would work itself back for four years. And there should still be excess revenue in that fund.
If I could just offer some comment here. When we think about the operation of the city, you know, there are certain staff people that don't belong to any department, but yet they're vital for that department to function, such as our city attorney. You know, he doesn't belong to any one department, but his services are necessary for public works, they're necessary for park and recreation, they're necessary for finance on a periodic basis, you know, not on a day-to-day basis. But periodically, his services are drawn in to every single department throughout the year. And the same thing with our finance officer. You know, he has to do the accounting, he has to prepare the reports for all departments. So a piece of his time is allocated out to public works, a piece of his time is allocated out to the police department, the fire department, to building inspection, and there are other people, the city administrator. And so there are pieces of city staff that go beyond the five that you identified. You know, those are the people who are most involved, the five that you identified, but there are pieces of other staff, and even this city council, these eight members and the mayor's office. You know, we deliberate on these issues, they discuss it, they vote on various issues. So a portion of the costs of the city council are allocated out to every department. So I think, you know, that's one of the things that, that I hear off and on is that it's real clear who does the exact, you know, visible work. You know, Randy Cardell's very visible in all of this. He's probably the most visible. And then you have his assistant, or, you know, the other building inspector, and you have Bruce, but then there's that whole administrative team that backs up every department of the city. And so a portion of those costs are also assessed against these permit fees in a logical, in a legitimate manner. So, and I don't know if we do that kind of accounting, but I think that's what Bruce is alluding to. And I don't know if we run those numbers together or not, but that's my understanding of how we function. Bruce, would you further comment on that?
That's exactly the way we put together the numbers for the state report, is we attempt to estimate the financial impact of each department on the process.
So even like the fire department, you know, the fire chief, and maybe a small sliver of the police department, I don't know, but perhaps, you know, enforcement policies.
That's absolutely correct.
So I think, you know, what that building permit fee certainly includes the five that you identified, but there's also staff that you have not identified that are also part of that building permit fee.
So if there was no Building Inspection Department whatsoever? Where, if there was no Building Inspection whatsoever?
Then I suppose a county, I suppose a county would do it, then.
But it wouldn't be, then, the allocation of a certain amount of times. There are certain people that are just key to the city. You're not going to get rid of a fire chief if you got rid of the Building Inspection Department. You're not going to get rid of the police.
You're right.
The city council or any of it. They're all key to the city. They're not key so much to the Building Inspection Department. And yeah, like Steve said, then the percentages, the exact percentages of what go into the state should be listed.
Let me, let me ask, and again, if you don't want to answer or you don't know the answer, that's fine, but the building permit fees that the city of Wilmer have are currently based on the fees that were established in what year, Bruce?
94. I believe our fee schedule's from the 94 Building Code.
94 Building Code. Okay, how does Wilmer compare to other cities in terms of what year their building permit fees are based on? Like, you know, cities somewhat our size, any way of knowing that, or?
Yes, we track that periodically. I would say we are definitely towards the lower end. Most cities would have a 97 or newer fee schedule.
And what's the, what's the result of having a newer fee schedule? Is it higher or lower, or what?
If we went from the 94 to the 97, our fees would increase over 20%.
I still remember a conversation I had with the manager of Menards after Menards was built, and he, he literally thanked me for our building permit fee, which I believe was somewhere in the range of $12,000 to $14,000, something like that. And he told me that the exact same size store, an identical store was built in Apple Valley, the same footprint of that, of that building, and the building permit fee in Apple Valley for their identical store was $48,000.
How many people are in that, around that store compared to how many are around our store?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't, all I'm saying is what he told me. All I'm saying is what he told me. So.
And to, to address your issue on how we compare to everybody else?
Yeah.
It's, to me, it's irrelevant. It doesn't matter how we compare to St. Cloud or any of the other ones. State statute clearly says that the fees have to be maintained and used only in that department. So the, how we compare to somebody else is irrelevant.
All right. Okay. Did you want to make some comments, too? Anything, anything else you want to add, or in addition? Anything else you want to say in addition? You're welcome to. Okay. Anybody else want to ask, Chad, any questions or make any comments here? Councilmember Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chad, you said in four years, we have collected $460,000, basically, in excess fees.
Yep.
I support the ordinance. I certainly don't support the increases. Mr. Mayor, we, we, correct me if I'm wrong, but we budget everybody's salary from yours and mine, the city attorney, city administrator, Bruce Peterson and his people. Those are all budgeted salaries, and so basically, I see this as being double-dipping. I mean, we already pay them to work eight hours a day, and that's already budgeted for. So what percentage of this revenue is collected in an over, I could understand this if this were in an overtime position, but they have to spend their time someplace, and it's already budgeted for. So I guess I don't understand the need to increase the fee, and don't support that.
Mick, you want to comment?
For clarification purposes, maybe, Chad's talking about is the building permit fees. We're not increasing those.
Well, what, what do you call these conditional?
Land use fees?
The fees, the fees that we were going to use for the F-14, is this one and the same, or is it a different fund that we were taking, that $25,000 from? And then they said that we couldn't use that for the F-14 because it was specifically for, didn't the builders challenge that?
Yes, they did.
Is this the same, is this the same document?
What I'm saying here, Mr. Dokken, is that the, if you look in Section 1, those underlined items are the proposed fee increases for those different activities to the left.
Okay.
What the speaker is talking about is the building permit fees in Section 2, and we're not proposing to change those.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I misunderstood.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, if I can, for just a second, there's actually an entire methodology devoted to working up a fee schedule, and it involves, like the mayor said, a lot of different time, but there's, but there's quite literally a host of accounting things. And I guess my question is, again, you know, my concern is, are we actually accounting properly for, fully, for city staff time? Again, I see from Chad's figures, you know, I see our expenses going up and up, even though the permit fees seem to be outstripping that. At, at some point in time, I guess, I guess I wonder, are we able to, are we capturing the numbers in a proper, in a proper manner?
Well, that's a good question, and we think we're doing about as good as we can, given the fact that construction is cyclical, and sometimes you're going to ride a high, and sometimes you've got to weather a low period. According to the state of Minnesota, we should have four full-time building officials at a minimum for the amount of typical construction that occurs in the city of Wilmer. One full-time inspector for every $10 million in new construction, and we've exceeded over 40 million for a number of years. So, you know, you could look at it and say, "We're understaffed." We haven't been willing to go out and try to add staff because you don't know when that low point's going to come. So there may be the appearance that we're taking in all this money, but, but it, like I said, it's cyclical, and the fact that we've got costs going up while the revenue seems to be flat, there could be a year where the revenue really drops off and we've really still got those same positions. We could have another year where revenue doubles and we've still got the same two inspections positions. So I think what we've tried to do is put something in place that's logical middle ground. We haven't been pushing to stay current with our fee schedules. We've been, and I argue this with staff all the time, my inspection staff thinks that our fee schedule is terribly outdated and that we need to adjust it. And I've told them that I didn't think that was a feasible thing to do because we've got a situation where we typically, at least on the surface, on paper, appear to be covering our expenses with our, with our revenue. And I've tried to instill in them the idea that that is the goal, that is what we should be doing. And again, there will be times when we may do that a little bit extra, and there will be years when we, when we suffer the opposite result.
Because you're looking at having to capture some direct costs, some indirect costs, you know, and it goes throughout, throughout virtually every department in the city.
Right. In calculating these costs, we also consider the portion of city hall that our department occupies, and we, we try to put a figure on that that would be like a capitalized rent figure. We try to break out a percentage of utilities and cost all of those costs out to the process. So there is a fair amount of work that goes into it. Is it 100% scientific? No, but it's as good a process as exists for identifying those costs.
Because you have to, you have to estimate certain building permit fees.
Right.
And, and sometimes you're going to estimate highs, sometimes you're going to estimate lows, but you've got to have some kind of a basis for these numbers. You're not just picking them up out of the air.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public that wants to make a comment about this? All right, if not, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point. Don't, you can just sit down, Chad, and if somebody has a question, they'll bring you back up. Thank you for your presentation. Council, you know, this comes back to the members of the city council now. The task here is whether or not to consider this ordinance. The task here is whether or not to consider this ordinance, which leaves the building permit fees the way they are, but changes the planning and development department fees.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just point out as well, it doesn't change them. The council's already adopted that by a resolution earlier in the year. What the city attorney is telling us that because of the nature of these types of fees, they need to be in ordinance form.
I see. So it's to set an ordinance in place that, that backs up the decision that the council made in January. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first time that we're doing this through an ordinance, I believe. Am I correct, Mick?
For these, I believe so, yes.
And what was the reason for going to an ordinance? Is it, is it state law? Is it mandated, or is it just something that we're doing to?
Rich?
More concrete? I mean, I-
Well, with respect to parts of it, it's because of state law. With respect to the rest of it, it's because, in my opinion, it should be by ordinance.
And by state law is what part of it?
The section one and section two.
Which have to do with building permit fees and, and department fees, right?
Right.
The state also, the state statute also gives each jurisdiction the ability to set their own fee schedule. We can set it at whatever we want, fifty bucks for a house or garage. We have that ability to do that. I don't know of any other law that has to do with fees or taxes or penalties where a community can actually set the fee schedule. I think what Chad was trying to say was that we're not opposed to fees and paying for a permit. It's the law. I mean, we have to follow the building code. But it's the way that the permit is calculated that's, well, kind of wishy-washy. It's done by value and not by actual work that's done. If you take a three-bedroom home with a two, two baths, attached double garage, and a full basement, one may be twelve hundred square feet, one may be two thousand square feet. The one would cost a hundred eighty thousand, the other one, three hundred eighty thousand dollars. It takes no more time to inspect the three hundred eighty thousand dollar house than it does a one hundred eighty thousand dollar house. Takes no more time to do the plan review for each of those also. Am I making some sense here? The reason we're using the ninety-four fee schedule, and in itself tells us that they're too high because we've accumulated about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars excess over the last four years, from two thousand three through two thousand six. So it's the manner in which we're determining the fee that, that we're opposed to. If I'm not, is that? Am I getting anywhere? Do you understand that? So if we could sit down and then make some kind of a fee schedule, I see they, they log out at forty-two dollars an hour here for any extra work or excess work. Between the builders and the city staff, we could determine how many hours is spent on each plan and in each inspection, and give us some kind of a say in how we create this fee schedule. I personally think it's arbitrary because it's value-based. I would also like to see the, the report that we send to the state. I also think that the council should see it annually. By law, we have to review this annually, according to the state statute, even though it's in ordinance form. I just think we need, we need to get these permit fees in line with what's affordable and an actual cost that it takes to do these, the plan review and to inspect the home. I don't buy the idea that it, it takes the fire marshal's time and the city council's time and the police department and finance. I don't buy that at all because they're going to be there no matter if, if we have a building inspection department or not. In reference to your question on the county and mid-Minnesota Development's fee schedule, mid-Minnesota Development is a little more than the county, the county's less than the city. We already deal with seven building inspectors in those three, three jurisdictions, and the inspect homes, they don't all do the same inspections. But I do think that the fees are too high. I, I don't, I don't think we should compare ourselves to other cities. Let's, let's make Wilmer the all-American city and have the lowest fees. Matter of fact, why don't we take first-time homebuyers and give them no fee? First-time homebuyers, well, there won't be any pretty soon. I mean, the cost of housing has just escalated and escalated. Let's do them a favor. Why do we have to compare ourselves to other cities? Let's, let's sit down and work out a fee schedule that's fair, and let's do it together. I, I agree with what Chad said.
Anyone else? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question of staff. Are there other ways to determine building fees other than valuation? I'm hearing Councilmember Christensen object to that part of it, but is there another way to do that?
Yes, there are other communities that use an arbitrary system. They'll just set a figure. It's not scientific, it's not cost-based, it's just a figure. You have the right to do that. There's nothing in law that says these fees have to try to capture all of the cost. To me, it just makes sense that they would do so, just like any product you buy reflects all the cost that goes into it. R and D, marketing, production, whatever.
And in fact, the system that we have now is a graduated system from lower valuations, pay less, all the way up into, you know, your million-dollar homes and so forth.
That's true.
Of paying, paying a larger amount, but are they paying a, a lower percentage of the valuation compared to? And, and, and I haven't done the math, but are they paying a lower amount of the valuation compared to?
As the value increases, that is true, and I think that is to reflect that there's not a linear relationship between the complexity of plan review and inspections and valuation. Though obviously, this code fee schedule is predicated on the whole idea that there is a relationship between value and complexity of the project.
Okay. So we have an inexact science, is what we have?
Yes.
Comes down to it. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it seems we have, we have this debate periodically, and we talk about it, and we can like cost accounting and we cannot like cost accounting, but the fact of the matter is, that's the, the system that we got in place. My question is, when we submit these, these numbers to the state, are we in compliance according to whatever the guidelines are? Has, has the state ever come back to us and said, "Wilmer, you have a problem"?
The state has not.
Do they, do they look at it, do you know, to, to check for compliance?
They have had some dealings with several metropolitan area communities regarding their fee schedules. They were accumulating millions in excess fees, and the, the state did work with them, or it actually came, I think, out of the Builders Association of Minnesota. And who initiated that.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to point out a few things for clarification, the, the builders usually end up paying for the building permit. They write the check. We don't make any money on it. It gets passed along to the homebuyer or whoever's remodeling, whichever the case may be. So I want to make that clear. We, it, it's not benefiting us. We're, we're actually looking out for the general public here and helping, helping housing the cost a little less by producing these fees as something in, in reality. As far as the state checking on communities, they really don't. They don't, they get those numbers, and I don't know what happens to them now in the state, but the only time there's been an action taken is when somebody has brought forward a suit against a city or a locality, county. And that has happened down in the cities, metropolitan area, and they, the courts favored with the Builders Association, and it costs the cities some money, not only in the legal fees, but in one instance, shock of a P, I think it was over a million dollars they had to set aside, and they reduced their building permit fees by sixty-nine percent last year. Sixty-nine percent. All we're asking for is, let's sit down and take a look at it, and show us exactly where it's going, and if we can revise it, let's do it. That's all we're asking for. It's just to be a player in the game and help set these fees or the fee schedule. It's up to the council.
All right, any other comments here? Has, has a motion been established, Kevin? All right, if there's no more discussion, does somebody want to make a motion? Councilmember Gardner?
Mr. Mayor, I move to give this ordinance here, adopt, adopt, give it a number and publish it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to give this, or to adopt this ordinance, give it a number and publish it. Further comment about that? Are you ready to vote then? Roll call, Kevin?
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen?
No.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
No.
Fagerly? DeBlick?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
The resolution passes, the ordinance is adopted, it's been given a number, and it will be published. Thank you. We will move on then. The next item in the agenda is number eight, and that's the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council and mayor tonight? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to number nine on the agenda, which is the Finance Committee Report for January twenty-ninth. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda had to do with some liquor license violations. And these were as a result of a December two thousand and six liquor compliance check conducted by the Wilmer Police Department. Staff presented to the committee the list of retail establishments that violated Municipal Code three dash two, selling or giving intoxicating liquor to persons to whom sale is prohibited. Clerk Halliday reviewed the history of violations per establishment, which included the American Legion having its first violation. We did have manager Darwin Osmus there, and he presented measures being taken to avoid future violations. The Pizza Hut received its third violation, whereby they received a ten-day suspension and paid a fifteen-hundred-dollar fine. Jerry's Liquor had the third violation, and they received a ten-day suspension and paid a fifteen-hundred-dollar fine. And Van Andy's Nightclub received its fourth violation, and as such, the revocation was in order by Municipal Code three dash ten subdivision B four. Van Andy's nightclub owners Ricardo Lopez and Marcella Diaz appealed the revocation order and were present to present supporting information to allow Van Andy's to continue operation. On hearing the testimony of Mr. Lopez, two Van Andy's staff members, and police officer Bridget Coit, a motion was made seconded and passed with the following recommendation. And that is to deny the appeal by Van Andy's nightclub and call for the revocation of an on-sale liquor license, and I'll move the recommendation of the committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal by Van Andy's nightclub and call for the revocation of their on-sale liquor license. Further comment about that? Councilmember Anderson?
I, I have a document here. There's just some further facts, and put in a little more formal form of, of the discussion that night.
You want to summarize that?
It's pretty much what, what I said, Mr. Mayor. It, it just lists it out.
Do any councilmembers want to comment on this at all? Obviously, the Finance Committee did not see any solid reason not to revoke the license?
That's correct. We did, we had a good discussion, you know, and, and testimony from both sides, questions were asked, and, and the Finance Committee didn't see any reason to deviate from the ordinance.
All right. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a brief question about what we're seeing here. I'm, this is, this is findings of fact, and I'm wondering if we need to adopt the findings of fact as our basis for, for the denial?
That would be a question for the attorney.
The, does, a question I guess I would have is, does that need to be part of the motion as well?
Is that understood, or does that need an amendment, Rich?
I think it would be right to clarify it and include it in the motion.
All right. So the findings of fact will be included as part of the motion? Is that the understanding of the person who made the motion and the person who seconded it?
Correct.
All right. Any other comments about this? Is this a roll call, Kevin, or is it a simple motion?
Simple motion.
All right. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When does this go into effect, or has it already?
Upon ratification by the council, which will be, staff will enforce it immediately.
And what does it involve them doing in Van Andy's? What do they, they actually just vacate the premise, or just shut down business? They have to?
Liquor needs to be removed from the building. State of Minnesota needs to be notified immediately, and their purchasing card from vendors will be terminated by the state.
So they have to take all the liquor out of the establishment, then?
That would be my understanding. You could ask the city attorney for clarification, but I believe that's what we'll enforce.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, back to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second item was an election budget amendment. Staff informed the committee that eighteen thousand dollars was budgeted in two thousand and six under the Elections Other Charges classification for the city's share of maintenance cost of Candyway County's election equipment, but it wasn't expended by December thirty-first. However, it is anticipated that the county will be submitting these charges to the city for payment in two thousand and seven. In order to cover these charges, authorization is being requested to move the eighteen thousand dollars originally budgeted in two thousand and six to the two thousand and seven budget for Elections Other Charges. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to appropriate eighteen thousand dollars for Elections Other Charges to two thousand and seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to appropriate eighteen thousand dollars into the two thousand and seven budget under the category of Elections Other Charges. Further comment? Councilmember Reese?
You're just moving from the two thousand and six budget to the two thousand and seven. That's correct. Eighteen grand, that's it. Revenue neutral.
Anyone else? Roll call?
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item has to do with reassessment of special assessments. Staff reported to us that special assessments are outstanding on a tax-forfeited parcel that had been recently purchased. When tax-forfeited parcels were sold in the past, outstanding special assessments were never fully recovered. It's being recommended that the amount certified but uncollected at the time of the tax forfeiture, forfeiture, forfeiture be reestablished when the parcel is sold. It's a little bit of a mouthful, hard for me to say. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I'll move the recommendation of the committee to offer a motion to set a public hearing for February twentieth, two thousand and seven, to reassess the special assessments on tax-forfeited parcel recently purchased, and to follow this process for future tax-forfeited property sold with outstanding special assessments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a public-
recently purchased, and to follow this process for future tax-forfeited property sold with outstanding special assessments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a public hearing on February twentieth to look at the reassessment of special assessments. Further comment about this? In layman's language, that means if there's a tax-forfeited property and an outside person buys it, they still, they have to pay the taxes that have a lien on the property?
That is correct.
And we've not been doing that in the past? They would pay a different set of taxes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in previous times, we have always reassessed tax-forfeited property that was sold at the county auction or subsequent years when it was up for sale, but we were following a process of reducing that amount by the sale of the property, and then making the assumption, which was erroneous, that we were getting that full amount of that sale back to the city of Wilmer. And we recently discovered that wasn't a reality, so we're changing the policy to reassess that dollar amount that was more or less abandoned at the time of the special assessments placed for whatever improvement project they were following. And this one was one where it was abandoned, I think, somewhere in about ninety-seven and never made a payment on it. So we're going to reassess the full amount that was adopted by the improvement project for that year.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember DeBlee?
I've just, I've got to get that a little clearer. So when the tax-forfeited property was sold before, the assessments that were on that property weren't necessarily collected. But with this, they will be. Is that right?
No, let me try this again. And I'll use dollar figures, I guess. If a tax property, if a parcel went tax forfeiture and had four thousand dollars of special assessments from any improvement project, but generally our streets, subsequently was sold at public auction, the county auditor would properly list those dollar amounts that could be reassessed, which he would list the four thousand. But if the property sold for five hundred dollars, we used to take that five hundred dollars off the four thousand and reassess thirty-five hundred dollars. But we were not getting that five hundred dollars like we thought we were because it's reduced by the expenses of the auditor, sometimes ten percent, sometimes twenty-eight percent, just a variety of numbers, and it wasn't always coming to us in the subsequent year of sale either. So the new policy, more or less, is to go right back and assess that full amount of four thousand dollars, and that small sale of tax-forfeiture property just goes more or less toward the purchase of the property. And so we'll get the full amount of the street improvement project assessment that was originally put on by following this new procedure.
So if that five hundred dollar piece of property is sold, the four thousand will carry over to the new owner. The five hundred goes where?
Well, someday, the county auditor will probably give us two, three, four hundred of it back.
Okay.
But not immediately following.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember DeBlee?
And Kevin, the intent of this would be that any and every time there's a tax forfeit sale, that we would have to reassess that, which would require a public hearing?
Well, that's a policy we have always followed.
Okay.
Correct. So we'll give them a notice in the next couple of days, and they have the right to be here and object to that, just like you would if you're placing any street assessment for the improvement projects. You have a hearing to levy that assessment.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given what I think I'm also hearing you say is that the, at the time of sale, they're aware of these assessments. They know that, they know that they could be levied back on, or will be levied back on there.
Absolutely correct.
So it's not a surprise.
The county auditor always lists those.
Okay.
No surprise at all to them.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Christensen?
That was my question.
Councilmember Reese?
Maybe I was reading and didn't catch it, but so now we're setting policy from this point on that each property will be the same way, handled the same way.
That is correct.
And it's in a form of a motion. It doesn't have to be an ordinance, it doesn't have to be a resolution. It's just a simple motion to set that policy.
I believe that is correct.
It says here. Yeah, I know, but it just seems like we're setting a large policy with a motion. That's why I'm asking the question.
Councilmember Anderson?
What we're doing here is we're asking for a public hearing.
Right.
On February twentieth.
All right.
That's what we're doing.
I'm sorry. It does say that, too. Okay.
All right. This is a motion. Those in favor of the motion to set the public hearing on February twentieth, say aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
The next item has to do with the Wilmer Public Library. Lori Ortega from the library was there and asked that the committee once again review, and they requested that the forty-four thousand, four hundred and seven dollars that had been eliminated from their budget be funded to fund the shortfall that's anticipated in two thousand seven. She indicated that if this amount would not be funded, beginning February twelfth, two thousand seven, the library would have to close on Fridays. Ms. Ortega felt she needed a commitment of funds from the city at this time so that she would not have to reduce the library hours. We also heard from Mary Hughesing, who represented the Wilmer Friends of the Library, and she spoke in support of the request for the increased funding. She felt that the library was the heart of Wilmer as an all-American city. John Hulahan, Pioneer Land Library System Director, explained to us that any action taken by the state legislature in two thousand seven will not alleviate the library's funding problems. Wilmer would probably only receive a small percentage of the allocation established by the legislature. Mayor Heike expressed concerns about the substantial increase in the library's request over the previous year. Of the forty-four thousand, four hundred and seven dollars shortfall, seventeen thousand dollars is entirely new expense levied by Pioneer Land Library Systems to the Wilmer Library. We had a lengthy discussion, a good discussion, and as a result of all of that, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I will make the motion to direct staff to find a funding source for seventeen thousand dollars to ensure that the library stays open with its regular hours through June two thousand seven, by which time the state legislature will have completed its session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to direct staff to find a funding source for seventeen thousand dollars so that the library would stay open with its regular hours through June of two thousand seven. Further comment or question about this? Okay, this is a motion.
Simple motion.
Does that require a roll call?
No, sir.
Simple motion. Any, no questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Reese?
I wasn't able to be at the meeting, so I didn't hear all the explanations. The last time we discussed it, the library funding here, we had reservations about funding it until we knew what the legislature was going to do. If we pass this, my understanding is then the seventeen thousand, our obligation remains then for that seventeen thousand in next year's budget. How did we come up with the seventeen thousand, and where does that put us in the future? I mean, we don't know what the legislature is going to do. I'm having a little hard time understanding all of this.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Reese, I'll try to explain how I came up with the seventeen thousand, and basically, it was an off-the-top-of-my-head approximation of the amount that it would take for the library to continue to remain open during the legislative session. It doesn't have any tie-in with the new appropriation of seventeen thousand dollars that Pioneer Land is levying against the Wilmer facility. In our discussion, I think we came to a realization that we were going to have to do something sometime, and that the library needed to see some kind of good faith, if you will, put forth on our part to ensure that they felt that their needs were being addressed and taken care of. We're still allowing for the legislative process to take place. I think the figures that the library folks gave us based upon the governor's recommendation for library funding would mean that Wilmer, for example, would receive something like three hundred and eighty-five dollars. That's not a realistic figure. We know that the Speaker Kelleher is carrying a bill, or going to be carrying a bill of her own regarding library funding being from Minneapolis and the troubles that they're having with library funding down there. We might see some better success, and I think we looked at it as a committee and decided that we needed to let that process play out while still being mindful of the needs. Now, I don't think there was a great appetite for having the library close one day a week.
I find it hard to believe that seventeen thousand dollars is the difference of February having to close. I mean, we said, we said to the library that they weren't, we weren't going to forget about them, we were going to see what the legislature was going to do. And I find it hard to believe that seventeen thousand dollars is going to make enough difference if they don't have to close in February, if they wouldn't have enough funding to carry them through until June after the legislature had completed its work.
They had indicated that it was about a thousand dollars a day to open the doors, to be open. It was just, just a little under that figure, and I know they're here, they might want to clarify that, if I misunderstood that. But that's essentially what, you know, we were using, what I was using as a baseline in coming up with that figure.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. You know, Councilmember Reese, I understand your concerns and share your concerns, and we have said all along, at least, I think individually, the council has said, we do need to take care of the library. The seventeen thousand dollars was, was a number Councilmember Gardner offered as a compromise. It was something to get us, to get us moving. Is it the right dollar amount? I don't know. But we do need to remember that whatever we put in there now stays in that maintenance of effort, and that's, that goes into the basis for the following years. We do need to see what the legislature is going to do. So the seventeen thousand dollars, I think, was just a good faith effort and something to try to keep the library going. I would add that we did tell the library that if they opted to close on Fridays, that would be a decision that the library was making, that was not a decision that was being forced on them by the city council, because we have said that we want to take care of them and we'll fund them. Having said that, and following the discussion, we, the motion was made to give them some additional funds.
I think to further clarify, Councilmember Reese's statement about, or question about, does this add to the baseline of funding for the library? If it's a straight allocation from the city to the library, yes, it does increase the baseline funding. Now, you know, the city could become a little bit creative if they chose to by allocating the money, you know, to a kind of intermediary, who then would give it to the library, and it wouldn't be directly from the, from the city, it'd come from perhaps the community foundation. You know, if the city gave it to the foundation, the foundation gave it to the library, it would not change the baseline. That's, that's another option that the council and the city could consider. And Rich, I'd like to call on you for just a second. If the city considered doing that, is that improper, or is that a, is that a strategy that could be utilized?
I don't know that the transfer would be improper, but I'm not sure it's going to accomplish what you think it's going to accomplish. To me, it's form over substance, and I'm not sure if it was reviewed that a court would agree that it did not increase the baseline when the transfer was made to, specifically for that purpose.
All right. We have both John Hulahan and Lori Ortega in here. Do either of you wish to make a comment before the council votes on this? You're welcome to, I'll give you that opportunity, if you want it, you don't have to. It's up to you.
My name is John Hulahan, I'm the director of the Pioneer Land Library System. Thank you for this opportunity. I just want to just, I think Councilman Gardner did a good job of saying why the amount was there, that is true, if we don't get the seventeen thousand dollars, that will cover us up to through June thirtieth, and I just can re-echo what he says. I'm here to answer questions rather than to, you know, it is so, our funding is so poor that we need the money to operate, it's that simple. We don't have a lot of reserves, we don't have many operations, it's just, man, we don't have money. We trust and we believe, we like to really believe that, and we do believe that the city council wants to. We are somewhat concerned because squeezing this seventeen thousand dollars makes us nervous. You know, we hear that, and we believe, we want to really believe that you want to come and help us out. But when you hag over seventeen thousand dollars, which will not, if the legislature gives us all the money that we need, what we requested, that would only cover the seventeen thousand, would not cover the forty-four thousand dollar shortfall, that would only, because it's not only Wilmer that would be interested in getting part of that money, but we have thirty-two other communities that would be also interested in that money. So any money that we get would have to be divided. So even that, if we got the five million dollars increase that the Speaker of the House is bringing to the, to regional libraries, if that in fact was passed, which is a sixty percent increase than we're getting now, even if that was passed, that only covers about a third of the requests we gave to, asked for the city, we're still short twenty-some thousand dollars. So we still need that seventeen thousand dollars anyway, even if we got all, all what the Speaker of the House asked for us. So I ask you to please approve the motion that was made by the Finance Committee. Thank you.
John, just hold tight in case somebody has a question. Councilmember Anderson?
Mr. Hulahan, I, you know, libraries in general seem to be struggling greatly. I mean, we read, we read in the paper, Minneapolis is perhaps going to have to close all of theirs and the county is going to take it over.
Yeah.
What, what's the future of public libraries? I mean, is it, how are they going to be sustainable?
Well, at that Finance Committee, I don't know, I think all you received that, there are many Minnesota cities where the city has stepped up to the plate. And you remember that document I gave you, this is what actually the city is giving to those communities. I gave you, I think, six or seven. These are cities that the city council often compares their other functions with Faribault and Owatonna, et cetera. They are giving double to their libraries what the city of Wilmer is giving. They average six hundred and six thousand dollars that the city, out of their pockets, out of the library, out of their levy, local levy, city are giving to their library. Wilmer wants to give two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. So the question you have there is that, in fact, the answer is, many cities are stepping up to the plate and are contributing significantly. Wilmer's giving half of what the, what the other ones do. So the answer is, it's being done already.
Okay, and that really wasn't quite what, what I was driving at.
Okay.
I mean, state and federal funds are drying up.
Yes, I would agree with that.
So, I mean, it's going to have to come down to local communities, and it's going to become more and more of a financial, a burden or obligation on the parts of the cities or counties.
I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair assessment. That is correct. I would agree with, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
John, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
How many, how many libraries are in the Pioneer Land Library?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. And if you could just clarify for me, the, the assessment of the Pioneer Land Library system onto the Wilmer Library is seventeen thousand dollars. That's a, that's an annual assessment. Is that going to continue year after year?
Under the, we had a, the recommendation for the three years was a six percent increase, which is, that would be what the Wilmer would be, six percent, two and a half, and three percent. So in two thousand and eight, it would be about half of that request, so I'm doing off the top of my head, around eight thousand. And then in two thousand and nine, it would be about eighty-five hundred. The same percentages. It was 6%, 2.5%, and 3%. And this was developed by a result of two summits that we had in December of 2005 and February 2006 with other cities and counties and in the Pioneer Land area. And that's why the formula came out of that process. And that was a process, that was those percentages, 6% increase, 2.5% and 3% increases.
And all 32 cities are getting that same percentage assessment?
All the libraries, yes, were charged the same percentage of that. That's what they were charged.
Anyone else? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, you're at the hearing when we came down to this, motion to this recommendation. It was my sense, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you and Laurie, representing the library, were okay with where we were leaving it for the moment. Does that?
Yes, I would accept. I mean, we would prefer until we get the home, but yes, we can stay open for that. Yes, Councilman Gardner.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that I think was said at the hearing was a willingness on the part of you and Laurie to enter into a discussion with our finance people, Mr. Schmidt or Mr. Olkins, or whoever they designate, to look at the finances, both short term and long term.
Absolutely. We welcome that opportunity.
All right. Thank you for doing that. Any other comments, then? We have a motion, and it's been seconded for the city to find a source for $17,000 to pass over to the library. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, I'm not haggling over it, as you put it. What I'm concerned about is the ability to continue the funding and wanting to know what the state does. And I just have a hard time believing that we're one month into the calendar year, and that you'd already have to be closing. You don't even know what's going to happen to the funding through the legislature. And I would...
Well, I do know the request is not sufficient to cover the amount of money that we're asking the city of Wilmer. I do know that neither, there's not enough money being asked that will cover that. So, we have to make decisions. We do not have any money available, so we have to make decisions. We reduce the impact on, if we had to wait, you know, we didn't get any money, we would be closed two days after July 1st. And we want to try to reduce the impact of the cuts. So...
Anything else here? Ready to vote on the motion? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
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 The motion passes on a six to two vote. All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
Back to Mr. Anderson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item was a request from Candyway County. Staff informed the committee that Candyway County is requesting the city consider waiving the building permit fees associated with the construction of the maintenance facility on Technology Drive and to reduce by 50% any required plan review fees. It was being recommended that these fees not be waived or reduced, and that a policy should be set not to waive fees in the future per Minnesota Statute 16B, point 71. It appears that this, I'll just add this comment, that this has been, this ordinance, or this statute's been in place for quite some time, and we haven't necessarily been abiding by it, by granting reduced or eliminating fees. So, following discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed to deny Candyway County's request to waive the building permit fees and to reduce the plan permit fees, and to establish a policy to not waive fees in the future per Minnesota Statute 16B, not 71. And I'll introduce that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to deny Candyway County's request to waive the building permit fees and to reduce the plan review fees, and then to establish a policy not to waive fees in the future. Further comment about that? This is a motion. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next item were some reports. We acknowledge receipt of the November Rice Hospital, December Rice Trust, Fourth Quarter Rice Trust, the Annual Rice Trust, 123106 Investments, the Fourth Quarter Investments, 2006 Interest Earnings, and the 123106 Convention and Business Bureau, and the 20123106 RAC 8. Our final item was to set a public hearing date to issue some bonds. Staff recommended that we call for a public hearing on February 20th for the issuance of 2007A bond per the bond schedule previously approved by the council. This would be the first of two bond issues anticipated for 2007. This one is for the Waterview Business Park. Following some discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to set a public hearing for February 20th, 2007, for the 2007A bond issue.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution for a public hearing on February 20th for 2007A bond issue. Comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next are the Public Works Safety Committee report for January 30th.
Have a motion to file.
Yeah, you're right.
I would move, unless there's questions, I'd move to file the minutes.
Second. There's a motion and a second to file the minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. I apologize. I was thinking ahead here. Now, we're on to number 10 on the agenda, which are the Public Works Safety Committee report for January 30th. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda was Rob Baumgarten from the Community Ed and Rec. And he was there, I believe, as the coach for Ridgewater Football, right? And he is proposing the use of an air cannon during Ridgewater football games. And he went over how an air cannon operates, and it's similar to a paintball gun, using compressed air. It would be operated by a trained adult away from the public and supervised. And he felt as though that there would be other benefits to other organizations within the city of Wilmer, like the Wilmer Fest and the high school events, and also sunshine. We discussed the use of the cannon, the possible violations of city ordinances and/or issuance of permits. And the matter was then referred to the city attorney and will be brought back to committee after that research. So, that was for information only. Second item was the improvement report for the proposed 2007 improvements. There are four segments of the residential streets that are to be reconstructed, and also three areas for mill and overlay. New construction includes Fifth Street Southeast, referred to as the Mall Road, and then construction of Wilmer Avenue Southwest from Turnpike Highway 40 to the new County Road 47, which runs across the old airport. New construction would also include street lighting. There was no formal response received from developers for other areas of new development. And there was some miscellaneous work, demolition of the runway and reclamation at the old airport, and then two areas of walk paths, crack ceiling, seal coating, and airport taxi lane widening. Total estimated cost of the projects is $4,136,500. Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce a resolution to approve the improvement report and order an improvement hearing for 7:02 PM, February 20th, 2007.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution for an improvement hearing on February 20th to approve the improvement report for streets and other projects. Further comment about that? Those in favor of that, oh, that's a resolution. Roll call?
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would also introduce a resolution to approve the budget, the preliminary budget for the 2007 improvements.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution which approves the preliminary budget for 2007 improvements. Comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
And, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers, there was three bids received for Project 0703, which is the Waterview Business Park Street Improvements. The low bidder was Dunick Brothers at $1,144,205.40. The estimate for this project was $1,380,000. I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to award the contract for Project 0703 to Dunick Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $1,444,205.40, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into a contract on behalf of the city.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution to award a contract for Project 0703 to Dunick Brothers in the amount of $1,444,205.40. Councilmember Anderson?
I see two different numbers on that, Mr. Mayor. The first part, it was a million one, then it was a million four.
I believe the 1,144,205.40 was correct.
I think your motion was for the 1,440.
Yep, it was. 1,100,001.
All right.
Is that right, Mel?
With that correction, the award, or the amount of the contract is $1,144,205.40. Thank you for noticing that. Any other comments about this? Roll call?
Councilmember Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Then 19th Avenue Southeast, the improvements are Project 0704, and bids were let for that. There were seven bids, low bidder being Dunick Brothers Incorporated at $828,096.30. The estimate, engineer's estimate, was $865,000. There are assessments included in this project, and the hearing would be held in conjunction with the 2007 improvements yet to be bid. So, I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to award the contract for 0704 to Dunick Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $828,096.30, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement, a contract, on behalf of the city.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution that awards a contract for Project Number 0704 to Dunick Brothers in the amount of $828,096.30. Comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Then in that same area on 19th Avenue and Fifth Street, Short Elliott and Hendrickson have completed the plans and specifications for the signal system at that intersection. And the committee has reviewed it, along with staff, and there's a recommendation of approval for these plans and specs. There would be a March 21st bid opening and April 2nd award date. Estimated cost is $236,000, and this project is state aid eligible. So, I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to approve the plans and specifications for Project 0705, and authorize the advertisement for bids to be opened March 21st, 2007.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution which approves the plans and specifications for Project 0705, and authorizes advertisement of these bids to be opened on March 21st. Comment? Roll call?
Councilmember DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. You know, it wasn't that long ago when these signal systems were costing about $100,000. Now, they're up to 200, what is it? $236,000 for an intersection.
Most of them are running a quarter of a million dollars that I've seen.
It's amazing. All right. Let's, number five, Doug.
In response to requirements of the Federal Clean Water Act, the Environmental Protection Agency has established Phase Two of regulations that will require public owners or operators of small municipal separate storm sewer systems, or MS4s, such as Wilmer, to obtain permits in order to legally discharge storm water into our lakes and streams. This permit program has been delegated to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency to develop and enforce permit provisions. The MPCA's goal for Phase Two MS4 permit program is to restore and maintain the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of waters of the state through management and treatment of urban stormwater runoff. MPCA has mandated that the city of Wilmer must obtain an MS4 permit by February 15th, 2007. This permit would include a stormwater pollution prevention program. That describes how Wilmer intends to manage storm water within its corporate boundaries. The stormwater pollution prevention program must include 30 minimum best management practices that the city of Wilmer must implement for each of six minimum control measures as follows: public education and outreach, public participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, post-construction stormwater management, new development and redevelopment, pollution prevention, good housekeeping for municipal operations. Wilmer's stormwater pollution prevention program must also include 18 additional best management practices to address the requirements of the lower Minnesota River Basin Total Maximum Daily Load Implementation Plan. This implementation plan was recently approved by the United States Environmental Protection Agency to lower phosphorus levels reaching the Minnesota River. Staff has requested approval of the stormwater pollution prevention program and its application to meet the February 15th, 2007 deadline. Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to approve the city of Wilmer's stormwater pollution prevention program and authorize its submittal, along with the application, to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency.
Second. We have a motion and a resolution, and a second for a resolution that approves the city's stormwater pollution prevention program, and then submitting it to the MPCA. Further comment about this? I have a question. Who's paying for this?
You're looking at us.
Mr. Mayor, I won't pretend to have answers for your question. I couldn't hear Mr. Reese because of the train noise. But I think Brian has a better position over there, and maybe he could step to the podium and talk a little bit about this program with you. It gets kind of complicated.
Brian, first of all, I've got a couple of questions. I'll give you the question. You can answer them the way you want, but is there any problem with the city meeting this mandate? Who's paying for it, and who's going to oversee it? You know, I mean, are we under some kind of a state inspection process or something?
Well, it's a fairly large program, and it started some time ago. Minneapolis-St. Paul started back in the early '90s, and it's been kind of trickling down to smaller communities. Wilmer was added about 18 months ago. Who's going to pay for it? This is an unfunded federal mandate. And there's a substantial amount of work... This is an unfunded federal mandate, and there's a substantial amount of work that's going to go into this process. It's a five-year permit for the first cycle, and the first focus is truly on the public education component of it, and doing some base mapping, and starting the strategic planning. Not necessarily wholesale implementation, but starting the planning process. Mayor, could you repeat?
Sure. First of all, do you have any guess, you know, what this is going to cost us to do all this? And then who's going to oversee it? Is the state going to come out and say, "Let's see what you're doing," or who's going to regulate whether or not we meet this mandate?
There's a number of communities in the state that have implemented a stormwater utility fee, and they're suggesting a $1, $2, $5 a month per residential home. MPCA and EPA suggest that higher. That number is actually substantially higher than that to implement this program. But that's the starting point. MPCA has been regulated or given the authority by the United States Environmental Protection Agency to monitor this program and to ensure compliance of the program. The program's a little bit different than maybe we've seen in other permitting in that the city of Willmer can create the program that fits them as a community. And so there's a lot of latitude in how the program is actually implemented. But they are, as Councilmember Reese mentioned, there's 30 minimum requirements, and then there's another 18 more that have been added because of where we discharge to.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Or Brian? Any estimate of what it costs to do this?
Well, the one, the first number is maybe 100,000 to 500,000 annually for the stormwater program. And others say it's going to be more than that, so.
And you said other cities are starting a new fee called Stormwater Collection Fee?
They've implemented a stormwater utility fee to address the stormwater needs. And there's really two components of stormwater. This actual unfunded mandate addresses water quality issues of the permit. Willmer also experiences occasional flooding and stuff, which is, can be associated with water quality, but can be a separate stormwater concern in all of its own.
All right. Sounds like a heavy mandate. All right, anybody else have any comments? Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Let's see, this is a resolution. Any other questions or comments from councilmembers? Rokeholdt?
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. That's the end of the minutes, Mr. Mayor. I would move to file unless there's questions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did anybody ask what the cost is if we don't do this mandate, this MPCA? Is there some big penalty, or? Keep your water. No water? Keep it. Got to hold your water. The stormwater program follows the National Pollution Discharge Elimination Systems permitting process. It's been a program that's been around for 20, 30, or 30-plus years. Under the wastewater component of that, when somebody's noncomplying, they won't allow any more hookups on your wastewater system. And so essentially, your development ceases. I'm not sure what they would do under the stormwater program, but it does follow the same regulatory authority. And so there's substantial standards that have been set up and are in place for this particular new program.
Brian, is the county under the same mandate as the city?
The county is not. The county is, doesn't have the population to require the MS4 permit at this time. Some counties are, some townships are, but they're more the larger counties and townships in the metro area.
Any other cities in Candyoy County under this mandate?
No. 43 discretionary communities were added for this last round. They'll include Mankato, North Mankato, Marshall. Manavideo was actually added. And the reason Manavideo was added, even though their population is significantly less than Willmer's, is that they discharged to an impaired water source. And so it's affecting a lot of different people.
All right. Anything else, Ron? Okay. Those in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next are the Community Development Committee report minutes for February 1st. Councilmember DeBlick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda was auto recycling business. The committee was provided a status report on the auto recycling facility that was in operation at the intersection of Highway 40 and Trot Avenue. The committee had requested an update as there was some confusion over the action taken by the city and the response by the business and the property owners. Staff reported that the vehicles had been removed from the site and that from a land use perspective, it was deemed to be a closed case. Councilmember Dacken requested more communications with staff on land use issues. He also asked that the staff communicate better with the public on land use issues so the public is better informed at the hearings and throughout the land use review process. The committee discussed how to better involve the public. Some suggestions were made, including putting conditional use permit review information on public hearing notices, making sure that the staff comments are available to the public at planning commission meetings, and make sure that contact names and phone numbers appear on all hearing notices. Staff told the committee that it was currently doing some of those things, but a better effort would be made to make and keep the communication lines open with the public. Item number two, the smoking ban. The committee reviewed the recently introduced bills for a statewide smoking ban. The bills are House File 305 and Senate File 238. Staff also presented information from other communities regarding their efforts to enact full or partial smoking bans because of activity at the state legislature regarding this issue. It was a consensus, the committee, to wait and see what the legislature does with the state smoking ban before proceeding with anything at a local level. Item number three was housing conditions for information only. Staff presented an update on several problem properties which have been dealt with in the past, and the status in those properties has not changed significantly in that the property owners still have not repaired them to a condition that warrants reoccupying of the structure. The committee discussed the concept of having a housing task force to review existing policies and ordinances. It was an idea that came out of the recent staff council retreat and was decided to hold off in this action until the report is received from the retreat facilitator. It was suggested that staff worked to better educate realtors on the responsibility of homeownership so they have this information to pass on to their clients. Staff agreed that a session could be held with realtors as an informational brochure could be prepared for distribution at closing that would deal with issues such as property maintenance, off-street parking, garbage, exterior storage, and snow removal. Staff offered to do the same for landlords and property managers when their rental properties are relicensed under the city's inspection program. Fourth item on our agenda was projects. Staff provided updates on the following projects: industrial park expansions, Midwest campus development, 5th Street Southeast, and proposed mental health facility. That concluded our meeting, Mr. Mayor. If there are no questions, motion to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember DeBlick, are we going to be talking at all here about the housing task force, or is that going to come up under a different part of the meeting or at a different meeting altogether?
We had discussed the possibility of a housing task force, and that was discussed at our council retreat as well. And I think the report from our facilitator is out, and we'll review that at the next committee and maybe bring a recommendation forth at the next Community Development Committee meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Those in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next is a consideration of a request for reapportionment of special assessments. This comes from Chad Munson. Bruce, do you want to explain this, please?
Mayor Hanky, members of the council. A request was filed with the city by Chad Munson, having to do with the assessments against the property he purchased on the south side of East Highway 12. He has a buyer for a portion of the property, and he has requested that those special assessments against 25th Street Southeast be reapportioned proportionate to the lineal footage of each of the remaining parcels on 25th Street Southeast. It's a recommendation of staff that the reapportionment resolution be adopted as presented.
Thanks, Bruce.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of a resolution reapportioning the assessments as requested. Comment?
Rokeholdt? Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Bruce, what is the intention of that property over there? When everything gets settled down over there, what's it going to look like?
The property that is just on the south side of Highway 12 will be developed for commercial purposes, and it's the owner's intent to develop the property further to the south for mixed-density residential, or to work with a developer to do that.
And what's the property along the highway going to look like? You said retail development? Any specific retail yet?
To the best of my knowledge, there are no specific projects that have been put forward for that site, but that is how it is zoned for general business development.
All right. Thank you. Next, then, is a consideration of the transportation funding resolution. Steve, you want to, or Kevin, who's handling that?
I can take it.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, is a resolution prepared by the League of Minnesota Cities. I wanted to bring this to the council tonight. You know, we talked about some funding issues just a few minutes ago regarding unfunded mandates, and we've also talked about the limits of what local government can do to fund things, whether they be libraries, or roads, or any number of different things. What this resolution does is request of the Minnesota Legislature that they get a transportation bill through the legislature, something that the governor can sign this year. In 2005, there was a bill that passed both houses and was vetoed by the governor. It was a bipartisan bill that was widely thought to solve a lot of the issues regarding transportation funding. It would have provided nearly $9 billion over the course of 10 years. In recent years, the state has had to decline offers of assistance from the federal government because MinDOT couldn't provide the state's share of funding. And in early December, the League of Minnesota Cities, the Association of Minnesota Counties, and the Minnesota Association of Townships got together and identified a list of funding mechanisms, and they are contained within this resolution, that all of the associations and their affiliate groups support to some degree. The stakeholders present indicated that a bill based on some or all of those funding mechanisms identified in the list could be supported by them. They're looking really for a broad suggestion that needs to come from cities and other local units of government. Apparently, some legislators are reluctant to take a difficult vote on funding mechanisms. And the trouble is, is that, you know, we're running unfunded transportation needs just in the state system, for example, of $1 billion a year for greater Minnesota transit. We're running short $65 million a year. City and county bridges, $50 million a year, and city roads and streets, almost $141 million a year. I think it's incumbent upon us as a responsible body to suggest strongly through this resolution to our local legislators and to the legislature in general that we want them to take action on this this year.
All right. So you're presenting this resolution that was prepared by the League of Minnesota Cities?
That's correct, and I make a motion that the council approve this resolution.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion and a second to approve this resolution, this transportation resolution prepared by the League of Minnesota Cities. Comment?
Mr. Mayor, I can recall a couple of years ago, sitting in Congressman Colin Peterson's office, along with, I believe, both Mel Odens and Bruce Peterson were with me at that time. And Mr. Oberstark came in there, who is the chairman of the transportation. And he was extremely upset we were out there trying to raise money for the Highway 23 projects. He said, "Do you realize how hard we work to try and get the allotments for our states for transportation funding?" And he said he felt, I don't remember what his words were, but he was very upset because Minnesota was, as Councilmember Gardner has related, Minnesota was the only state in the Union to return, and I don't remember how much it was that year. Do you remember? It was very significant.
It was billions.
Amount of dollars that we had returned because we couldn't match it. So I think this is an appropriate action to take. We are, we are here in west-central Minnesota, lacking, and the Highway 23 task force has been very outspoken and very diligent in their lobbying on this. When you look at from Interstate 94 to Interstate 90, west of the Twin Cities, the number of four-lane highways is very negligible. I believe the only thing that we've got right now, if I recall, is Highway 23, which has been done recently, and a little bit of four-lane down in Marshall. I think that's the only four-lane in our whole region. It is critical for ground transportation, for any industrial development within our municipalities, including Willmer in this area. So I think this resolution is very appropriate.
Councilmember Swenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in support of this as well, but was wondering if it will be structured so that rural areas will be the focus. rural areas will be the focus.
What my understanding of the resolution and the discussions that have been contained within this is that there are needs throughout the entire state. It's not necessarily a focus on one area or another. One of the issues that comes up in the constitutional amendment that was passed last year, they were forecasting, for example, $300 million going from the general fund to roads and transit, and already, that figure has shrunk to $275 million. There are transportation needs all over the state, both metro and outstate, roads and transit, where we're woefully inadequate in our financing. And as years go by, the cost of doing these projects just increases. And I really believe that it's incumbent that we tell the legislature that we need them to take action now, not just for the rural areas, not just for Wilmer, but for our state.
Other comments? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the year that that happened, we didn't take the federal money because we couldn't match it. We were in a terrible deficit.
Yes.
And I believe Governor Palenti was in office, and I believe he dug us out of that deficit. I look at this resolution as aimed at Governor Palenti and trying to get him to sign on to a tax. From my understanding, he would rather borrow and use a bonding bill to raise funds for transportation, and this legislature is against that. And he further states that a gas tax is forever. Bonding bill, you do pay off. So I can't... I'm not for this resolution. I'm sticking with the governor.
Councilmember Anderson.
You know, when I read this, the little brief summary, my first reaction was, wow, this is a little bit partisan, but I don't think the intent really is. I see as options that they do put general obligation bonding for local roads in there as a possible alternative. So I don't think this is a partisan thing at all, and I think we need better roads in rural Minnesota, also in the metropolitan area. You talk with companies that try to get traffic through the cities, and they have trucks that sit for hours trying to get through there at certain times of the day. So Minnesota is falling behind, and Minnesota needs to move forward. So I think whatever we can do to nudge them ahead, we should do.
Anyone else? I'll come back to you, Ron. Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not my intent, nor do I believe it, the intent of this resolution to point any fingers at anyone. It's certainly not my intent, regardless of how I may personally feel about the governor's efforts regarding transportation funding, to be pointing any fingers. This is simply asking the legislature and the governor to end up with something that they can agree on so that we can get a transportation bill passed this year. And that's the focus of this effort.
Councilmember Christensen.
I guess I look at this resolution as a type of lobbying effort by the League for trying to tell Governor Palenti what to do. I don't think there should be use in cities to do that.
Anyone else? I know the process that the League goes through when they come up with a resolution, it's not done quickly. It's a very tedious process. It goes through a lot of regional meetings. It goes through specific groups that are studying certain issues, whether it's housing, transportation, finance, whatever. You know, it's a long, tedious process. These policy committees make recommendations to the board of directors, and eventually the board of directors adopts certain of the recommendations. And the people that have been involved in the discussion represent a variety of cities, both small and large, urban, rural, large size, small size. So the process is quite complete before the League recommends anything. So I think it's got some validity as far as something that comes out of the League of Minnesota Cities. All right. Any other comments before we vote on this? Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
No.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dokken.
No.
Fagerly.
No.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
No.
Four ayes, four nays.
I'll vote in favor of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Where are we on the agenda? We are now down to number 14, adopting the goals and objectives from the January strategic planning retreat. Mick, you want to handle that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in your packet or included with your mailing should have been the observations or the results of Mr. New's work, where he outlines in general the goals and objectives for the city council in the next two years. I believe that if you go to page eight, that begins the identification of the higher priority and the lower priority goals. And I think that the thought process has been here all along that the council would formally adopt this document and those goals and objectives by resolution.
All right. Thank you, Mick. Council? So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the goals and objectives from the January strategic planning retreat for the city council. Comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that's a resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. We're now down to miscellaneous announcements. There's an announcement here from our police department that on Tuesday, February 13th, at 7:00 at Vingy Lutheran Church, there's a cops meeting for Ward 2. Again, that's Tuesday, February 13th, 7:00 p.m. at Vingy Lutheran Church, Ward 2, Community Oriented Policing and Problem Solving Meeting. I want to remind the city council members that you voted at the last meeting to change the next city council meeting from the 19th to the 20th of February because of a holiday. So it'll be Tuesday, February 20th. We have a very important meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, February 6th, at the fire station, and that's our public hearing on the information about the possible relocation of the wastewater treatment plant. This meeting is open to all citizens and the media. It'll start at 7:00 p.m. tomorrow night, Tuesday, February 6th, in the training room at the fire station. Please come and listen to our consultants, Donahue and Associates, and our city staff, and ask your questions about, you know, what are the considerations, what are the issues, financial questions, whatever, about where the new wastewater treatment plant will be located. I have some good news, I hope, for all of our citizens, and that's that we're in the news again. Channel 11, Care 11, has announced that on Tuesday and Wednesday, February 6th and February 7th, there'll be a broadcast on the 10:00 p.m. news about the changing demographics in the state of Minnesota. I think it starts out with some issues related to housing and the cost of housing. This is a statewide kind of story. And then it's going to center on Wilmer as an example of a community where the demographics are changing quite rapidly. And this stems from a conversation that the investigative reporter, his name is Rick Capcella, had with Tom Gillespie. Tom is the state demographer for the state of Minnesota. And in their conversation, Mr. Gillespie indicated that if Rick wanted to see a community that exemplified what our whole state is likely to look like by the year of 2020, he should come out and visit Wilmer now. And so I know that Rick Capcella and his staff, there was another reporter and a news television man, were out here four different days during the month of January, collecting information, interviews. And so they're broadcasting their story Tuesday and Wednesday at 10:00 p.m., Channel 11 News. So please take time and watch that. I hope it's a good story. I received some good news this weekend from Mr. Charlie Nelson. Charlie is an avid and a very strong volunteer with the racetrack and all the racing association activities that take place at the fairgrounds here in Wilmer. And Charlie indicated to me that Wisoda, which is the association that regulates dirt track racing in seven states, has now made a decision that all racing and all race cars must have mufflers to participate in any of the sanctioned races in a seven-state area. And that should help improve the noise problem, especially on the north side. And I'm sure it will not eliminate the problem, but it should certainly help to reduce the problem of noise from all the race car driving. And that should take effect with this upcoming season. I'd like to call on our police chief to give us a quick summary of polar plunge. Polar plunge is a great activity. And Chief, can you tell us a little bit about it and what kind of the scope of it was and your own comments about it?
Well, the polar bear plunge is an activity that is sponsored by, in our community, anyway, by the Wilmer Police Department, the Candyoye County Sheriff's Department. We raised money for Special Olympics by getting people to plunge for pledges in Green Lake. We did it on the 28th of January this year, and we found 179 hardy souls, including the fire chief, that took the plunge. And we raised over $28,000 for Special Olympics. So it was a successful event. It was our first time that the weather was under 32 degrees when we actually plunged. I think it was 6 degrees or 8 degrees, something like that, with a wind chill of about 30 below. But good times shared by all. A lot of people showed up, and we thank the community for their support.
Thanks, Chief. A great event, and I noticed that our fire chief has still not talked since the polar plunge. He's still thawing out. But a great day, and actually, the water was warmer than the air temperature. So $28,000 raised in about an hour and a half of activity. That was great for Special Olympics. Are there anything else that the council members have for announcements?
Council meetings.
I always forget that, don't I? All right. Council meetings. Finance.
Finance will meet Monday, the 12th, at 4:45.
December, or February 12th, 4:45, city finance. Public Works?
February 13th, 4:45.
Public Works, February 13th, 4:45. Community Development.
February 15th, 4:45.
Community Development will meet Thursday, February 15th, 4:45. Labor?
Labor Committee will meet Wednesday, the 14th, Valentine's Day, at 4:45. And Mick has promised that we'll be out before 8 or 9 o'clock so that we can go to Valentine Dinner.
All right. The city labor committee will meet February 14th, Wednesday, at 4:45. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. We are adjourned.